All right, we're good to go.
Hey Ted Bang again.
How do we want to proceed? Do we want, okay, I know. Do we want to just read the agenda, the first item?
Yeah.
Review of the draft ordinance amendment for small wireless facilities? Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the review of draft zoning ordinance amendment for small wireless facilities. And maybe you could give us a little bit of background, RJ.
Sure, so I'm gonna actually turn this one over to Chris from our town attorney's office just because both of the draft ordinances on the agenda tonight kind of had most of their momentum before I came on the team. But from what I understand, this is some additional consideration in response to the 5G conversation that a lot of municipalities are having right now. So, Chris?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
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 Okay, great.
Yeah.
So, the origin of this ordinance amendment happened in mid to late 2018 when the Federal Communications Commission issued an order which, among other things, set special rules for small wireless communications facilities. And the short version is, is it set new timelines for municipalities to act on applications and also some other restrictions about what an ordinance or what a review required. So, we prepared several of these ordinances for multiple municipalities that have gone through this process and then relatively recently tried to adapt one for the town of McCandless. So, the beginning part of the ordinance addresses what's known as the shot clock is by the FCC order essentially saying if it's going to be a co-location, small wireless facility, you have 60 days to do it. And if it's a, it's a new structure, then the turnaround time needs to be 90 days. And the FCC order set forth some tolling limitations. For example, if the application was incomplete, the municipality got back to them quickly, tell them about the incompleteness, that the clock would be stopped. So, that's kind of what the first part of the ordinance addresses. The second part of the ordinance addresses location of these and recognizing that 5G appears to be, there seems to be a big push for these nationally and by the wireless facility, wireless carriers and frankly by the FCC. So, we wanted to be able to zone them in a way that did not prohibit their use where there would be a small, where there could be a gap in coverage, but make them go through the hoops to put them in the most zoning friendly locations possible. So, that was the starting point for this. I know we got some comments on it and I'll be happy to answer any questions we have, but it was basically a starting point in inviting comment and suggestions where we want to go to make it fit the town of McCandless.
Chris, just real quickly, this is something that is needed though, isn't it? It's something that is taking care of people who can't get coverage. Is that correct?
So, essentially, it's going to address what are known as small wireless facilities, which are needed for 5G, which is the next wave of telecommunications. It's going to be quick video, quick audio and more essentially is my understanding of it. I don't know the exact science, but apparently when this 5G network gets up and running nationwide, they're going to need these towers like every 500 to 300 feet to deal with all the data that's going to be flying through the air.
And just for the record, four minutes later, that was Ted Minert speaking. But for Ted, if you and Jonathan could just say who it is before you talk, since you won't pop up.
I will, I will.
Thank you.
Okay, this is Ted again. So, are you saying that all of these 5G facilities will have to be within 500 feet of each other as far as?
Not right now.
As they're concerned?
Not right now, but I think if we had looked into the future, that's something we could expect the industry to argue is necessary. So, this ordinance is set up to make it so that they do it in the more developed and commercial areas prior to leaning in towards the residential areas.
Does this mean that Sprint only need 1500 feet, AT&amp;T would need 500 feet for Verizon? So, you'd have every carrier posting poles all over the place because they needed their 500 feet?
One of the other aspects of the ordinance is we're going to try to make sure that they demonstrate that co-location is not possible, that they can't use the same tower or facility. Frankly, the FCC has taken the position recently that each tower, or excuse me, each provider, wireless provider, has the right to not have a gap in coverage. So.
That could be the case.
That could be the case.
Because I mean, if I'm Verizon, I'm putting in a pole that holds mic to stuff. I'm not going to make it any bigger so I can put Sprint stuff there.
Well, in that case, if there was a light pole or if there was something else within the area, they would have to put it on that first. They couldn't just put up their own pole. And, you know, maybe something, this is a conditional use application too. So, maybe depending how the tea leaves or how this plays out, you know, requiring. I mean, it's a weird edge though because you don't want these poles that can handle necessarily multiple towers. It might be more sightly to have, you know your neighborhood better than I do. And if there's, if it's a street with a lot of light poles on it, you might just want one antenna per light pole instead of one taller one that has multiple on it. But if we're going to be putting up a million poles.
Yeah, that's, I mean, McCandless is what Kim?
Many, right?
Percent commercial maybe, you know, so 75% of the, of the community that's residential that, you know, probably doesn't have a light pole anywhere in at least neighborhoods that I'm thinking of. So, I mean, that means if somebody wants coverage anywhere off of the main drag, you know, the Wexford Flats, the Route 19 area, you know, you're, you're plopping them down wherever you want. And that means there's going to be multiple, you know, again, Sprint, AT&amp;T, Verizon. Everybody's going to want to have their pole somewhere. So, to me, that, I, I don't know how, where you put that or how, if you can or how to do it. But I mean, somehow I think you got to force, you know, whoever puts the first pole and has to make it big enough that everybody can go on it or you're going to have a lot of poles just because they're even to be onesies instead of threesies or foursies.
I would assume whoever puts the poles up and therefore owns it could charge some sort of fee to those who come on later. So, it's not a total loss cause.
True, and that's the way it works with larger cell towers.
Right, but you have to make them put it in big enough to do that and make the other guy who's not, who's their competitor, send them a check and that's a hard thing to do.
I mean, so you're, that's. Make sure there's, make sure there's language saying the pole will be big enough to accommodate. And two, you have to open it up and accept other facility, other providers to use your pole, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, you can't say, well.
Exlute them.
Yeah, if you say, I don't like you for putting your thing on my, what's our recourse?
Right.
Again, I don't know where that fits in the term of the word here, but you know, I think you have to somehow force this, be forced co-location, not, don't make it an option, make it a requirement.
And we do make, it is, you got to demonstrate that co-location is not possible. But I think it's a really good idea for someone who gets in there first to make sure that they accept future providers to use their. I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, right. I was gonna say, this is Jonathan. Yeah, I think there's a distinction between showing that co-location is impossible when you're the one trying to find a location to do it. But we need something to compel the owner of a location that they have to be amenable to, to come to a reasonable agreement with, with another provider to share a location.
And to be fair, I don't think we could impose that requirement on existing structures, on private entities or.
Right.
Duquesne Light. I don't think, you know, if there's a Duquesne Light pole, I don't think we could say you have to allow cell phones on your provider. But if a cellphone provider puts up a new pole, I think it would be okay as a condition of that being accepted, that they open it up for future use by competitors. To limit the number.
I mean, if you put, if you put it in with a foundation that's designed for one, you know, antenna array on it and it's a 12 inch diameter, you've, you've precluded anybody from adding one on. So, when the next guy comes and says, I want to put one on it, alls you have to say is, well, my foundation was only designed for one, so I can't share. So, he can, he can establish that through the installation phase by just designing it to hold one in lieu of designing it to hold three. You know what I'm saying? And again, I don't know where that shakes out or how it shakes out some way. But, you know, if you, if you don't, you know, put that requirement in there, you know, I'm going to design it for one because it's cheaper for me to put in. I don't have the same structural, whatever it is, foundations, so I can put my pole in cheaper. And then when the next guy comes along, you know, too bad for him because my pole was only designed for my antenna. So, I don't have to share.
Chris, is this something that the FCC, it seems like this is something the FCC would decide? And looking at this ordinance, I thought we just had a couple of things that, that we were really responsible for deciding that most of this was already decided by the FCC. But just the things that you listed in here were the things that we were required to put in the ordinance. Is that right or did I misunderstand that?
The parts about, maybe I can explain it this way. Small wireless communications facility, that is defined by the FCC order. So, that's why we included that definition. The timing of review and the tolling section is all straight from the FCC requirements that we need to comply with. The language about batched applications and the fees that we can charge for the application and the reimbursement for use of a right of way is straight from the FCC. And the design guidelines are something that we can mold to fit the needs of the town.
Okay, so can you just tell us what we're allowed to control and then we can focus on those things?
I'm starting on page six.
Really? Okay. I had a couple of comments earlier than that, but.
Yeah, me too.
Well, let's still go through them just so we can.
All right, well, Dan, I'll let you go because you got a, you had a very good summary of a lot of issues and I read them all and I think I agree with all of them. So.
Well, I'll, I'll start, if you, if that's okay, RJ, you want to just go it this way?
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, my first comment is on page three, section two. And there are two definitions in there, 125.6 and 125.7. It says a wireless communication facility means a wireless communication facility. I've never noted to be too effective to define the term with the same term. And it does that in both the micro and the small definition.
Well, the term wireless communication facility is already defined by the code. So, part of that was micro wireless facility, you know, it's a wireless facility that also meets these, that's this size.
So, probably what maybe you'd be thinking of, you don't want an applicant to say, oh, well, these things don't apply to me that are under the, that say just wireless communications facility because this is a micro facility.
Right.
Well, there's a definition for micro and, and small, and I had another question about that, but perhaps that's needed. There is a, a true distinction between micro and small and both are needed. The, the difference in size is hardly anything.
So, where micro comes up, it's kind of, we're looking into the future with this one where some, some companies in other parts of the country are simply dangling these little boxes from power lines. And they're, they've asked that we not include them in the definition of small wireless facilities. But the reason we include for this purpose is the definition, it says, basically saying for, for now on, since you're doing the same thing, but you're just a little bit different, we're going to treat you just like a small, like small wireless facility. In other words, we're, we're only defining them just so there's no confusion that we know what you are and we want to be, we want you to be subject to our zoning regulation.
Okay, well, I knew there was, I knew there was more to this ordinance than, than we saw. So, some of the things that I'm mentioning could be very well addressed and answered in, in greater detail somewhere else. But I didn't see any distinction between micro and small. In fact, I never saw micro mentioned again in the information we got. But I'll let that go because it sounds like there is a distinction. I just was not aware of it. I still happen to think that defining something with the same words in the, in the definition is not a very good way to go. But that sounds like we did not create that definition. Is that accurate?
Well. I can look at that. I'm not sure. So, I just want to see.
I, I think it's not totally uncommon, at least from what I've seen so far in our zoning code, but also just in code in general, to sort of preemptively define something to say it's applicable in the same way that this existing definition is already. So.
Right.
I, I, I point well taken and I agree that generally just a reiterative definition isn't the way I'd usually go. But it might be sort of just a cover your bases approach with this particular term.
I'll move on. My next comment is on page.
Dan.
Yes.
Hey, Dan, can we stand up pages for a second?
Sure.
Just above where you were talking about Ted Minert again, where it talks about minimal functional height. Means the minimum height necessarily for wireless communication facility to fill a gap in coverage. Does this vary, this heights? I mean, is there a minimum gap or minimum height objectively? Or is that depend on something else?
There is. The phrase gap in coverage is kind of a term in art, term of art that the courts have used in determining whether a wireless facility must be allowed under federal law. And the test is whether it's a gap, there's a gap, a significant gap in coverage. In other words, can they provide service? And the definition is.
Well, what, what I was getting at, I guess, is, you know, is there a minimum height of 50 feet? Or is there some cases where it might be a minimum height of 150 feet for the same, to cover the, the area?
I think it depends on the location of other towers in the area, the topography and the desired coverage area. So, there is no, you can't just say, so say there's a huge.
So, there is, there is no objective standard. It has to depend on the site.
It depends on, it's site specific, yes.
Okay, the second question was right under that where it says wireless communication facility, micro. And they give some dimensions for, for something. And then they say also an exterior antenna of no greater than 11 inches in length. Does that mean there's some box sitting on the ground with an antenna up on a pole or what does that mean?
Where this came from was a discussion I had with a provider who wanted to get that exact thing exempted from coverage because it would be hanging from a wire between utility poles with an 11 inch antenna sticking out of it. So, it'd be like just a box hanging between power line, hanging between power poles. And that is what micro is meant to address. So.
So, it is, the whole thing is a box with an antenna sticking out of it?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what would be mounted up on the pole?
Or on the wires.
Between the poles.
Wherever you want to put it. Yeah, wherever you want to, wherever you want to put it. I'm, I'm just trying to get a better picture, that's all. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Back to you, Dan.
Okay, I, on the next page, I just have a question. There's a reference on page four, 125.7, five at the top of the page to tribal lands. Do we have tribal lands in McCandless?
No, no idea, but that's the, that is verbatim, the definition used by the FCC for small wireless communications facility. So.
So, we, okay, do we have to use it then in our?
We don't have to use it, but I mean, it's a federal definition and I don't see a read, even if it's, that section isn't applicable, I don't see a reason to vary from the federal definition that we'll be using on anyway.
Okay, and then I move on to page five.
Well, before we leave four, can I just chime in a second under timing of review, that whole section there? First of all, when I read it and I saw shot clocks, Chris, I was like, when did we join the NBA? But now what you said about the FTC setup, so I guess that's their terminology. So, that's kind of unique that they picked that, but whatever. I had two questions or comments, I guess. I didn't see anything in here about a posting of the application, a notice of the application for the public to review or comment. RJ or Kim, I mean, isn't there some way that people need to know that this is happening? Because I don't see that happening anywhere in this whole thing that I read that it's going to be, that we're going to know that they're going to put this pole up in their front yard because it's in the right of way.
Um, this is a addition to the existing wireless ordinance that's in effect. So, it would still be a continued conditional use process.
Okay, so in that existing ordinance then is a terminology verbiage that says, you know, when somebody makes an application, we'll notify whoever somehow. Is that out there already then?
We'd follow the notice requirements under the municipal planning code for conditional use applications.
If you give me a second, I'll link the section that we're amending in the Zoom chat for those of us who can see it. The first section we've been discussing is definitions. I put the link in there from, from my first message and this next section, 1341.13, I'm about to link as soon as I get there, just FYI.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I got, I wasn't, I, I didn't realize we're amending an existing one. So, I guess that if that is already covered somewhere, that's fine.
And on that note, in the page three, the 125.6 and the definition of wireless communications facilities, micro, I think we do need to capitalize the definition where it refers to wireless communication facility because that is a defined term in the ordinance. It's capitalized in 125.7 on page three, but it should be up in 125.6. And I think that provides some clarity as to why it defines something as itself because we do have a wireless communications facility in 1311.04 in the existing ordinance.
Good point, Brendan.
And this is Jonathan. Also, while we're in that same definition, I had a question. You said that dimensions are resulted from a conversation with someone from a carrier. Are those dimensions like an industrial standard? I just don't want to preclude all the other carriers because only that one service has that device that fits within those parameters.
I had the same thing, Jonathan. What if, what if somebody has a 12 inch long antenna? We're going to not allow his because it's an inch bigger?
Yeah, I don't want to create unfair advantage. So, I, I just want to make sure that those were industrial standard dimensions.
I believe that they are. I, in addition, I didn't just rely on what our conversation, but I looked for other ordinances around the country that address these and use the most common dimensions airing on the sides of the biggest I could find.
So, if somebody had one that was a different dimension in some way, would they go to the zoning hearing board then to get theirs approved?
Depends what they're trying to do.
We should, I mean, we should give them that. I mean, and if it's an inch bigger because.
It should be something maybe along the line, having, typically having dimensions no greater than blah, 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 not.
Well, or like I said, or maybe there's a sentence that says, you know, antennas of different sizes than this one, you know, might have to be, if they're bigger than those nominal dimensions, then they have to go to the zoning hearing board.
That would be, in a situation like that, we would either have, whether it's me as the zoning officer or, you know, if they need a building permit involved, basically, we would look at the dimensions of, of the application submitted and make a determination as to whether or not it's permitted. At that point, I would just either tell them, you know, you can go to the zoning hearing board if you really want to use a different piece of equipment. Or, you know, which, at that point, you have to prove hardship. So, you know, that's basically just something that we would do at the administrative level anyway.
Well, again, I would, you know, you guys can address the minimalist changes usually, I assume. But of, again, and we're, as Chris, Chris said, we're trying to do a future, you know, we're kind of future-proof this.
Right.
In two years, they might say, hey, I'm going to make my box a little bigger so I can put a little bigger battery in it. So, I don't have to make them every 500 feet. Now, I can make them 700 feet. And we don't want to preclude that just because we made it 11 inches instead of 13 inches. I, I think we're on the same page. As long as there's, as long as there's a way for somebody, like Jonathan said, who comes in with a different sized box in a year and says, hey, I want to, I need to do this. I can do the same thing, but my box is a little different. I mean, as long as the zoning hearing board can, you know, make a reasonable determination on it, I'm okay with that. That's their job. That's what they do all the time. But I, I just want to make sure that's understood somewhere that, you know, when Sprint reads this and says, well, mine's a little bigger, I need to, you know, here's all I need to do to get it approved.
There's, it's not allowed to be a little bigger. I'm looking up on the FCC website and it says that the Federal Communication Commission has made this definition and this size.
Oh, okay.
So, so that's, that's what I was looking at. So, the FCC is the one who made this size. So, it would be up to them. And I know at the end, we always say, and if any of this is illegal, then it's null and void. So, if the FCC changes their rules, but this isn't our rule to change. It doesn't look like to me.
And so, this is, this is Jonathan. So, if it's, you know, defined by the FCC, I think would conform with industrial standards.
But then, but then maybe this should reference that if the FTC, I mean, if this is set by the FTC, they can change it also. And now we've adopted their old, that they've changed, you know, to make, maybe it should just say per the FTC regulations. Why even get into dimensions?
That's a thought. I mean, I, in general, I tend to, when there's a higher level of government that has some sort of regulatory power, you know, that we can't really, it's unclear whether we can supersede the standards of these boxes. Chris, do you know?
Oh, I mean, I think for our purposes, we're not necessarily, we're just trying to identify what a micro wireless communication facility is and state that if you want to put one in, we're going to treat it like a small wireless facility. So, I, you know, for example, if you meet that definition, there's no necessary benefit toward you. It's not like you get to do it without going through the zoning process. You still have to go through the zoning process. So, what I'd suggest is just basically keep the definition we have. But then say, you know, typically having the dimensions no greater than 24 inches, you know, meet the requirement. And then I'll add on per the FCC regulations as amended. I think it's helpful to have the numbers in there so someone doesn't need to Google FCC regulation on wireless.
I would agree.
Makes it easy for me.
Exactly. There's nothing worse than having those.
Yeah, those dimensions or as amended or approved by the FCC or some such language.
Yeah, this is Jonathan. I, I agree.
Okay, all right, good. Moving on to page, I'm, I'm moving on. This is Dan on the page five under the fees section. And number two, and this is just a question for my, the first part of my issue here. Number two, reimbursement for right of way fee use. Are, can these only be put in right of ways? Cannot they be attached to a private building? Or if they are, do we lose control or do we only have control when it's in our right of way? I don't understand that distinction.
We can only charge a fee if it's in our right of way. If it's on, if it's outside of our right of way, we can't charge a fee.
And then in my question, I use the example, what if somebody wanted to put one on our Grubbs Avenue, Grubbs Road building? That's technically not a right of way, I presume. Are we, maybe that's too granular of a distinction. But are there other buildings or places other than a right of way that we have control over? Maybe that's too granular of a distinction, but are there other buildings or places other than a right of way that we have control over?
Um, I, under the FCC's order, governments, so since it's our property, this fee restriction would apply. That it would have, we'd have to be able to track it and justify it for whatever it is. And that would be, you know, where how that would play out. If it was a private property owner, they're not obligated to, they can charge them whatever they want.
Okay. So you, you've answered my basic question is that on private property, we're, we're out of it entirely. We have no control over the look, the size, the anything of this?
Oh, no, no, no. We just can't charge a fee for it. Our zoning ordinance can certainly regulate. You know, we can choose what zoning districts it's allowed in. We can choose, we can put aesthetic requirements for what it looks like. And, you know, regulate it various other ways, but we can't charge a fee for it.
Okay. But where do we do that type of control that you just described? What if somebody on the top of the new Allegheny Health Hospital on Duncan there wants to put a 50 foot god awful tower?
That would be in here.
That is in there?
Um, well, this can, the, the function to control something like that would be in this conditional use requirements in the zoning code.
Okay, I, perhaps I didn't see it. I'm sorry.
It, it might not be that we explicitly stated something like that in here, but in theory, that's where those types of regulations would go.
So the general, maybe just so we can start, just answer your question right now. If you scroll down to what we do, the way we regulate it is by citing on page.
Yeah.
Paragraph three, the first thing is, and this is something, you know, not be appropriate for the town of McCandless, but a lot of municipalities want these in the right of way. You know, you've got to put these things in the right of way. You cannot put them spaced back on top of buildings. If you want to do a small wireless facility, we want it in the right of way. Because typically there's telephone poles and light poles that you can put them on and no one's really going to notice it. And then you got to demonstrate that if you want to, the first, first place you can do it is the C eight district. And if you don't want to do it there, you can go to C seven, but you got to demonstrate that the C eight won't work. If you want to go below that, you got to demonstrate that the levels above just won't work to fill your gap in coverage. And that's how we regulate the location of these things.
Okay. Okay, thanks. Further down in that same paragraph, it talks about how this fee is going to be and how the fee is set. And it's, it's intended to compensate the town for the town's costs and occurred incurred in connection with the activities. And then it says at the last sentence, it shall be based on the town's actual right of way management costs. Do we have that level of granularity in our accounting system that we can, we can show what our actual cost is for a particular piece of right of way?
Two things we can, I left the town some flexibility because the, this is part of the FCC two thousand eighteen order. That requirement is straight from the order that we have to justify the costs and demonstrate the actual cost of this. They provide a safe harbor number that I did not include in the ordinance because some municipalities figured their engineers could come up with an actual number that's higher than what the FCC allows. So I can certainly will and can share what the safe harbors are. And in that case, you just set the fees and you don't need to do anything else. But if the engineering company and we could justify it, we could go to a higher number. And that's why I said the fees are established by resolution. So we don't need it in the ordinance. We could just do the safe harbors and put this.
And we can do the safe harbor and not be challenged by an applicant saying, no, I want to see your actual costs because I think your actual costs are much less. And in which case, we're going to spend 100 hours of accounting time trying to figure out what that particular piece of right of way actually costs us to maintain.
So the FCC said the presumption that these fees are legitimate, in my experience, the telecommunications companies are happy to pay. The fees are fairly low. So it's.
I haven't heard.
It's 500 bucks for an application. And 270 bucks a year for the right of way fee. So for them, it's, it's not substantial.
Kim, are you still on here?
Yes, I'm here.
Well, is the town going to enact an ordinance that would set right of way fees? So we can set these to what we think they are? Because I would assume the right of way fee along Route nineteen is a lot more indifferent than the right of way fee on Grubbs Road.
Um, I have several questions about this section myself. Like who's going to do the inspecting? Is this something we're going to outsource? Does this mean that we're going to have to hire a new person because all of that? Or is this going to be an additional responsibility of our zoning person? Or is RJ, is this going to be your responsibility? So I have just a lot of questions about what this actually is going to look like. Who actually is going to do that? And that would all be part of these costs. So if we just say some guy, then we could say whatever the going rate is. Are we going to have to hire a new person? How much is this training? Do they have to go somewhere else? Something have to keep up every year?
So, um, to, I'm for the first question about fees, because I'll try to go in order here. The fees are typically set by a fee schedule resolution. I think that McCandless does that annually. Have not been here long enough, so maybe Kim can confirm. But, but that's typically, you will do fees like that through a resolution just because it's, it's a much less intensive process to amend a fee schedule resolution rather than an ordinance. So that's, that's pretty standard practice. Regarding, since this is essentially a conditional use, it would be reviewed with the planning and the building department the same way that any sort of other land use would be. So essentially, the portion of this ordinance amendment that is going on as a definition sort of tacked on to the towers and antennas section of our conditional use, it just functions in the same process in which they would have to submit plans to our department. There's typically an escrow involved in that that would cover our engineer's review costs. Again, this is probably something pretty standard for Gateways, our development engineer. So we would, we would follow the same escrow and billing procedures for reviewing and inspecting these types of uses and plans as we would for any other type of use.
Well, RJ, I think that's, that's, that's true. That's, it's standard. You guys can figure out what that fees. But I think there's an ongoing yearly fee of what their use of the right way is worth is what I'm.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would.
Where it is easier to figure out, like you said, but it's that yearly rental cost fee that somebody has to, like Kim said.
Which I, I'm, I don't know a ton about our, you know, accounting software. I don't have to play with that too much. But generally, there's a lot of either government software or general accounting software that would just generate an annual bill. And we'd probably pick, you know, either the beginning of the year, the end of the year, something like that to charge it after they were installed.
How much is it?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a, I believe it's 270. Is that correct, Chris?
270 is the stand, the safe harbor, yes.
That's what the FCC it could, says it could be. I think Dan's question, Kim's question, our question is, if ours could be 500. I mean, again, right of way on Grubbs Road is not as valuable as right of way is on Route nineteen. So to me, there's, there's some schedule of values, you know, just like the right of way on Bris, you know, and Courtney, Calley Brook where I live is not as valuable as the right of way in, on Grubbs Road. So.
Right.
Somebody will have to sit down and figure out some sliding scale of.
I would tend to say the amount that we would potentially get more to do the actual engineering, because this part does say, and I think this makes sense, that any additional fees would need to be justified by town engineers. I, I think that probably sort of the marginal revenue that we would get would not necessarily warrant going through an exhaustive process like that for every street. There are probably some that, you know, maybe it wouldn't be 270. It would sort of even out that, but I haven't done the math.
No, and I don't think you do it by street. I think you do it by your A through Q. You know, you have this list of sighting locations that, you know, tells you where they should be A through Q. So theoretically, each of those has some distinct value that might be different than others. I don't know. I just think the town, again, it's not a planning commission function here, but I think somehow in the town, if you're going to adopt this ordinance, need to get your head around how this right of way fee, the ongoing yearly fee is going to be calculated and assessed. I agree, the application fee is easy to figure out. There's a stand, I mean, I'm sure Gateway can say it's going to take me three hours. You guys can put that.
Well, the application fee is in addition to any plan review escrow. So, and that's again, pretty standard. It's kind of the same thing as when somebody files, just a site plan in general or, you know.
FCC has set that at 500. We might find that that's costing us 750.
Well, if it's, if it's additional above, like the $500 is sort of just an application fee, which covers just administrative costs for filing. So that's all separate from anything that would actually be billed directly, I believe, to the engineers. Um, and all of this could be just sort of dynamically revised in the fee schedule resolutions. Chris, what have you been seeing with other communities? What have they been doing with this right of way fee?
Most simply go with the safe harbor numbers, just are all the complexity natures that you've been discussing. By the time you figure out, you know, what the true costs are, you know, you've spent a lot of money doing that. And two, you're kind of facing yourself, setting yourself up for a lawsuit. If someone says, no, that's too high. You shouldn't be doing 500 or a thousand dollars or 270 a year. So let's go fight about this, you know, going up against somebody who has bottomless pockets for.
We don't want to be the test case.
I mean, perhaps one way to solve this, if we, if we have this flexibility, that last sentence, which says the annual right of way management fee for small wireless communications facilities shall be determined by town and authorized by resolution of town council, period. And then skip and shall be based on the actual costs, da, 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 da. Just say it's going to be based, it's going to be determined by us and based on and authorized by a resolution. And we don't have to go through the gymnastics of proving it. If we, if we can do that.
Well, it, it would depend on if there's anything. Oh, Kim, are you, you might be muted. No, you're not. But are you speaking? Oh.
No.
Can't hear her. Okay. Kim, if you, let me try to mute and unmute you and you might work again.
Okay, there.
Oh, hey, Jim, we hear you. Kim, I don't hear you. Maybe if you close the program out and hop back in again, I can readmit you.
Okay.
Hi, Jim.
Hi, I finally got things worked out here.
Yeah, I, I saw you join. What we're doing for people that aren't on video is, um, they are just saying who it is before they chime in.
Okay.
Um, and right now I think we're, we're waiting for Kim to hop back online.
And I, I see Chris is gone too. Did we lose him?
He, I think he just turned his video off while he's waiting for him to rejoin.
I, but to my, to my question, do we have the right to amend some of this language? And can we strike the last part of that sentence that says it shall be, but shall be based on actual costs?
So some things may be different about, you know, again, McCandless, whether anything having to do with, you know, our charter. And so, oh, yeah, Chris is reconnecting too. However, in general, if you put that same language in a resolution, it still should work. But now that we've got one of our town attorneys back on, maybe he can clarify that. All right, let's, let's test Kim now that you're back in. No, we cannot hear you. I, I can kind of read your lips, but I can't hear you. Oh, geez.
Chris, can we hear you?
Can you?
We can, we can hear Chris. Um, the only other thing I can think of is.
I had to.
Time with this and she put headphones in and it helped. Kim.
I missed the last minute. I lost my internet connection, had to re sign back in. So if anything was directed towards me a few seconds ago, I missed it.
My point and question are the same, and that is can we strike the last part of the last sentence of number two? And delete the words that say, and shall be based on the town's actual right of way management cost. Just finish it right after it's set by resolution of town council. Do we have the right to strike those words at the end?
We have the right to strike it, but they are under the FCC orders. So the way the FCC is set up, our fees have to be based on actual numbers. However, there's a presumption that they will be if we go with the safe harbors of $500 and $270. So I'm leery of taking out the legal requirement that is there. But confident that if we go with the safe harbor numbers, that there won't be any, it would be a really hard challenge for a wireless community.
Let's see if we can hear Kim, by the way, while we're. What on earth? I don't know why we're having such a hard time. This happened at the town council meeting too.
For Kim?
Yeah.
Must be something.
She down.
Probably on her end.
Yeah, I think so.
She's pointing to you. Do you, can you unmute her?
Oh, yeah, she is unmuted right now. Oh, you know what? Is she? No, okay. I, I wanted to make sure I hadn't gotten a text from her, which I have not.
Dan, getting back, this is Ted Minor, getting back to your question. I, I would assume that the FCC has put language like that in because different towns end up with wildly different numbers. And some towns look at these fees as a revenue generating situation.
Right.
Uh, you, you see that, you see that particularly with sanitary authority numbers where their, their tap in fees are, sometimes they're very reasonable, sometimes they're outrageous. So I think they're trying to just level the field. So I think that what Chris said about sticking to the safe harbor numbers is probably the best way to go.
And again, though, we're giving you some flexibility. If we look at it and decide to look at it, we can adjust those by resolution. But, you know, that's just, we're, so we're not exclude, some people put those numbers right in their ordinance. Right. Harpers, but, you know, I don't think that's a good idea. I think you want to have some flexibility to put it in a resolution.
That's, I mean, that makes sense. Yeah, I'm good with that too. Like, we can live with that. Looks like Kim is still out, so.
Yeah, I, I sent her a text and I, she's probably trying to figure out. I don't know how she fixed it at the council meeting, but, but the same thing happened.
My next point is just a simple typo type thing. And Chris, you could perhaps add it on page six, design guidelines, C at the top of the page. Uh, in the, in the title are design guidelines for small wireless communication facilities on new support structures. It's, that's, we're talking about support structures the rest of the way. I would assume you just should include it.
Put it in the title there.
Just put it in the title because everywhere else it says support structure.
Yeah, except for five. Is that the number?
C five.
It wouldn't have support there.
Yeah, C five, same thing. Anywhere that it's not.
Yeah.
I've got a couple other comments on this whole section too, whenever everybody's ready.
Yeah, so do I. So go ahead. You start, Rob.
Okay, um, in, in number, paragraph number two, an event of new support structures located outside the right, it shall be designed to resemble the species of trees found within the immediate vicinity of the area. What if I wanted to put in a flagpole with it? Why do I have to have a tree? Um, seems, it seems a little, I mean, we've seen people put them outside the right of way. I know there's a church to put it in the bell tower. Why are we saying it has to be a, some form of tree?
Well, I think if it would be one of these small wireless facilities, again, designed for DAS, not necessarily just putting an antenna on top of a building. These small wireless facilities typically go on their own pool or own structure, have a base about halfway up and then on the top has a little, like a hat almost with a wire sticking out of it. It's not the typical thing that you would see on a, like a water tower or on.
Okay, but, but still I could, I could make that look like a flagpole probably.
That is. That is, that's why we're here, to see, uh, some communities wanted it to look like trees. Some just to look like other things, so, you know, that's.
I guess my statement, Chris, is, why are we telling that it has to, I mean, it, shouldn't there be some, you know, flexibility? It might, a tree might look good on Groves Road, but it, you know, a flagpole might better look on Route 19 where there's no trees anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
I mean, it seems to me like we've, we're, we tell them it has to be like a tree found within the immediate vicinity, but I think that's a little far-fetched depending on the, the diversity of the town.
Hey, Rob, Ted Minor. Um, I'd like to get rid of this whole thing about trees. I, uh, I've seen a number of, um, antennas put on trees and they usually look pretty god-awful. I mean, even our, even number two here, it says, "It shall be designed to re, to resemble the species of trees found within the immediate vicinity of the area." If you have all oak trees there, are you gonna have an oak tree, uh, tower? I mean, it's, 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 it doesn't look good.
Yeah.
The, the ones, I, I don't think I've ever seen a artificial tree designed as an artificial tree to hold one of these antennas look decent at all. I, I would prefer to just eliminate that section altogether.
I do. I don't know what the, right, if it's eliminated or changed the verbiage to be, you know, as approved by the town or something, I don't know. But, and then I have the same question on paragraph three. "In right-of-way shall be designed to resemble and have the same material faces existing standalone streetlights or match blah, 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 you know, existing decorative poles in the vicinity." Driving up Groves Road, there's not a streetlight around. So how are we going to match a streetlight if there's none there? Full of any type. I mean, 90, except for, you know, the Route 19 corridor, probably, you know, again, 90% of the town doesn't have streetlights or decorative poles. So, you know, two and three, both are kind of directing them to do certain things, but they're impossible to, to do, I think.
And that might be true, and here's why we put that in. Um, under the FCC order, I misspoke a little bit earlier. They do, in addition to the threshold, to the timelines and the fees, they also make a requirement that if you're going to impose aesthetic standards, that they must be in writing before the application is submitted.
Okay.
What this ordinance was designed to do, these paragraphs, for example, were designed to do is that until we can get something developed, you know, we want them to look exactly like this and just have a display that's attached to the application showing what's acceptable. Have something there. And we kind of address that in, um, C6. Support structure and material finishes shall, so it still goes back to the light poles and whatnot, which doesn't seem to apply. Then we authorize the.
Well, they're, they're in the southern end of the town.
But then the second sentence.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Jim, uh, I'd like to get a word in here. Is it not possible that we can just say?
Enter your meeting ID, qualify town.
Did you hear that?
Oh, I, oh, I just.
Hey, you're back.
Am I back?
You're back.
You are back.
Am I still back?
Yes. Okay. Sorry, Jim. Please continue.
Okay, we just say, we can't put there that, that all support structures will be approved by town council? And, uh, or do we have to have all this verbiage in here to cover everything? Because council's gonna approve it anyway.
You need to have objective written standards if you want to enforce aesthetic requirements.
I got it. I got it. That's what my, that's my question.
Kim, let's test you again.
Um, can you hear, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can.
Okay, so what I'm trying to do is I'm, I, something happened. I'm trying to make your, um, thing so I can see you a little bit bigger.
Um, try speaker view in the right-hand corner.
Speaker view?
Yes.
You're fabulous. Do I want to leave the meeting? Please, no.
No, please don't.
Did I mention I hate technology? So here is a tru, the, I took out, got a picture of one of the trees. Um, and the tree isn't fake. It's like a hairpiece. Um, and I don't know if it's good or bad, but it's like, there's a tree, they pose, they put it in the tree and then they cover it up with like a hairpiece, only a tree piece. So I don't know if that helps anybody. I tried to look for some pictures of what these things would look like as opposed to like this, which is pretty ugly. I don't think we want that.
Right. I would agree. I mean, a tree is a tree is a tree. It depends on who's saying it.
Yeah, well, I, I don't know what we need to be alternatives to that, but, um, okay.
I would say as long as, you know, the, the Wexford Flats point is well-taken, that it would be very odd if suddenly a bunch of trees popped up there. So whatever, whatever we do, as long as it doesn't create a bunch of those, we should be good.
I don't, I don't think they're supposed to be fake trees. I think they're supposed to be, from what I understood in the reading of this, natural concealment is you hide it in a tree.
Okay.
Yeah. So if like, if you, all your wires were buried and all you had were trees in the front, you could hide this antenna in the tree and then it would be covered up with tree stuff.
Wait, this paragraph two reads, it says, "In event a new structure is located outside of the right-of-way." So a new support structure, a metal thing, "shall be designed to resemble the species of trees found." But this to me is a, a tinsel tree.
Yeah, I would agree with you.
Metal pole with something hanging on it that makes it look like a pine tree. And I think part of that is if there's, like Ted said, if there's oak trees all around, then a pine tree doesn't really fit, you know, the book either. So that's, I think that's the part of the dilemma.
But isn't all this, as long as all of this is subject to final approval by whatever commissioner council is reviewing it, it doesn't that cover ourselves?
See, I don't think that it would. I, I get the, the idea that your objective criteria have to be objective in order to provide the applicant that something they can conclusively, um, satisfy. But the question does come up with these examples, if, if it's just specifically, say, you know, designed to look like a tree or something else, where on that sliding scale do we get into too discretionary if we say, "It shall be designed to look like other, what do you call them, above-ground vegetation, poles, implements, or something like that, given the character of the area?" I don't know what the answer is, if that's just too discretionary to say, well, there's a lot of light poles in parking lots here. You don't have to make it dress up like a tree versus if it's a, you know, in an R3 and there's a lot of trees, then the character of it would be trees.
Right.
I mean, I, I think that's the overall issue, that these can be located in widely divergent places and there's not necessarily a good one-size-fits-all without getting way too specific.
Yeah. I, again, I, I don't disagree. It just, it seems too specific now personally, Brendan, you know what I mean? It's like, it's a, it's gotta be a tree.
Chris, do you, can you shed a little light on sort of the genesis of this particular design guideline?
Well, the thought was, if you look at a C6 a little further down, initially was, so the genesis was, the FCC says we need to have objective guidelines if we want to enforce any aesthetic requirements. You know, that's, we need to have something in writing that an applicant come in and have an idea of what's expected to them. So we can't just keep sending them back to the drawing board. So with C6, the ultimate plan is to have the town administration publish these standards and maybe attach to your application that anybody wants, that anybody, so if you want a application form, there's like, here's a picture of what our standards are, and it could be in this district, they gotta look like this. In this district, they gotta look like this, on and on and on to fit the various areas, or maybe you just.
Okay. And could that maybe be something that would be either adopted administratively or by resolution?
The purpose of this ordinance was to give the town administration that authority to do it on their own accord.
Promise I won't give us anything ugly.
You know, one of the, one of the things that, up, when I was up in the Adirondacks, they did that. They tried to disguise the antenna as a tree in the forest, and it really was a joke. Uh, and everybody was laughing about it. But I think we've come a long way. That was about five or six years ago. And they can do things much better. The idea, I think, behind this is if you're gonna put an antenna in with a group of trees, disguise it to look like a tree. You're not gonna put that alongside of the road where there are no trees. It's to blend into and fit so that it's not obvious.
Well, that's why it's called stealth, stealth technology, so it hides out.
Yeah, but it isn't always stealth.
As stealth as we can make it, maybe.
Yeah.
I just, so I, I mean, I, I'll leave it to the town administration to decide. I mean, Jim, I don't know what you, or Ted, or anybody else, Ted, um, you know, I would leave it to you guys, but I think you want to reread these paragraphs and maybe, maybe you lose one, two, and three, and you just say, "But leave paragraph six."
That's what I'm hearing. Um, one, there are no light poles, so that sentence doesn't make a terrible amount of sense and.
Right. Maybe, maybe RJ and the group need to, you know, kind of pick up the ball and, you know, quickly come up with some kind of standards of, of what they think the right things are in the different areas.
Sure. That, that's definitely something that we can work on.
Right. And then the only other comment I had was on number, paragraph four, Chris. It says, "Maximum diameter is 12 inches." But again, going back to that co-location concept where we're trying to, you know, dawn, you know, what a 15-inch allows you to get three of them on there? I mean, how, how, what made us pick that number of 12?
When I was working with another municipality to come up with this, um, regulation, similar regulation, their engineer was confident that a 12-inch diameter pole could get you all the height you could possibly ever need. Um, it, that's, that, that's where that number came from.
Again, was that with one antenna on it or three? Again, because that's.
It would ensure, I think he used that diameter because it would ensure that they didn't put a big wooden pole up, that they'd use a sleeker-looking metal pole.
All right. Well, again, I, again, I would ask, again, RJ, I don't know if it's Gateway or somebody, but, you know, technologies change. We're looking at something maybe a little different. I don't know what their criteria was to pick 12. But, a-again, I would hate to say, we tell everybody it has to be 12, and then we go back and say, hey, you need to collate or co-locate. He says, "Well, you made me put a 12-inch diameter in, so I can only hold two. But if I would have put a 15-inch diameter in, I could have held four." So, I mean, again, we're, we're boxing ourselves in to a place that I'm not sure we know. We don't know the answers. I don't know the answer, but I'd be a little leery to put that number in writing and then kind of preclude what we think some other aspects of this thing might be.
Well, one of the things, if you take a look at some of those poles that they support, uh, traffic lights on, they get those poles holding up an arm, hanging out over the middle of the highway.
Right.
That's, that's a lot of weight and that's a lot of levered weight. The weight on these antenna will be directly downweight on a pole. So I think that the pole would support, a 12-inch pole would support an awful lot of weight for an antenna.
Well, Jim, it's the wind load that's gonna drive it.
That's true.
Not the downward.
But it wouldn't go down those arms too.
Yeah, it's, it's, again, I'm not, I'm not a structural engineer. I'm just, I know that the wind load is what's gonna drive these things because they're gonna have, you know, something on them that's gonna catch the wind. And, a-again, I'm, I'm not, a 12-inch could hold 50 antennas. I have no idea.
Maybe you have to put more poles up if they want to put that many antennas on.
Well, that's, we're trying to maximize how many we can get on each pole, so we don't have one every 50 feet. So, a-alls I'm saying is somebody, but I, and I don't know who the somebody is. It's easy to say that, but should be some, some engineering cross-check to that number to make.
I'll give them a call and, and see what they think. My guess is that if they've fit several of them on telephone poles so far, we should be okay. But again, to ask.
Yeah, I mean, Gateway does streetlights, so I'm sure they have some idea of what kind of wind load, what you can do with a 12-inch pole. If you put it in, anyway. So, and again, I think the other part of that is too, is it, is it a wooden pole? Or is it a metal pole that's 12 inches? Because they, again, would have different weight capabilities, both wind loading and downward. So, that's the other, that's the other comment I had on that section, but that's all I have.
It was tough to taper those wooden poles.
Well, they are act, I thought they weren't actually tapered anyway.
Yeah, they's.
Three somewhere.
They'll be tapered.
Okay.
I have no further comments, so if anybody else can pick it up from here.
I'm, I'm concerned about the refrigerator-type, um, associated equipment. We've, we've talked a lot about the actual antenna, but down at the bottom of page three, there's actually this large, um, at the, um, commissioner's conference that I went to last year. They showed pictures of this and one of these companies was there presenting about this. It's the size of a refrigerator and it has to sit somewhere. And that's, that's what I, it doesn't go on a pole. It goes on the ground. And that's what I'm concerned about. Where, where is that gonna be?
Don't know.
Hi, this is Ted Minor. I, uh, I asked about the same thing earlier, and I was told it was simply a box with an antenna.
No, that's not true.
I don't know whether they're, apparently they have to have a, some sort of a, um, console down on the bottom.
Yes, they do. And, and it is, um, it's large. It's, um, three cubic feet, which is, um, oh no, 28 cubic feet, which is, uh, 290 gallons, you know, fridge, that's the size of a small refrigerator. And, um, it's a, it's a big, I mean, it's a big device. Now, the pictures they showed of it were against a person's house painted the same color as the person's house. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna like, I'm not gonna like that. Of course, these were pro, pro people. But, so that's my question. You can put this little device, you can put it in a tree, you can put it on a pole, you can put it somewhere, but where's this big refrigerator gonna go?
Kim, I saw one of these poles down Riverside that the city put in.
Uh-huh.
Um, and I don't know if it's a 5G or what it is, but it's actually right in front of, um, St. Peter's Church, if you've ever been down there, not too far. You work at Allegheny General, right? Um, drive around, whatever, what's that one, um, Allegheny Commons, is that that goes around?
Yeah, yeah.
St. Peter's Church is right off of Allegheny Commons there. I don't remember the street name, the second. Arch Street is the one, is the crossroad I know that it, that it's at. They have, there's a, there's one of these small antenna poles there, and basically the base of the light pole looks like a, a college refrigerator-type box, okay, sitting on the ground. And then on top of that comes out the pole, the pole comes out of that, and then there's a light fixture attached to it. And then on top of that is another cylinder, basically, that extends up, that is the antenna array, I assume, inside this tube. So that one I've physically seen, and basically they've put that, that box is the base of the pole, so it.
Well, there are two boxes. If you look down at, on page three at the bottom, number two and number three, there's each antenna, um, that's associated with this, has this three cubic feet volume, and that sounds like a small refrigerator, right, 22 gallon. I, I had to convert it to a puffer carry, sorry. Um, and then the number three is the, this other equipment associated with the facility, 28 cubic feet in volume. So there's two. Now, I don't know what decides where or.
No, I, I don't know where, I mean, three cubic feet would be three foot tall by one foot wide by one foot deep.
Right, okay. But how about 28, the next one?
28, 28's a different number, but.
Right.
It's like.
One that I saw.
Three by three by three.
cubic feet. The one, the one that I've seen on the north side.
Right.
Take a drive sometime. I would say that's about three cubic feet.
Okay.
About this 28 cubic feet.
Yeah, that's what I mean. And where, where does that go? That's, that's a beast. That's big. Chris?
Uh, my understanding is that they're typically attached to either on the pole or at the bottom of the pole. As far as the ordinance and the FCC defines them, the facilities which include, other than the antennas, can have no more than 28 cubic feet in volume. So that is the absolute maximum size they can possibly be. So that is the absolute maximum size they can possibly be. My understanding is that they are attached to the pool either halfway up or at the base.
28 cubic feet, 28 cubic feet is, is roughly three by three by three.
Yeah, correct.
That's 27 cubic feet, but that's close.
Yeah. I don't know what the.
I didn't, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that they had this additional component to it.
Yeah, they do. Yeah. Uh, they just showed the pictures of it and it, it sounded all okay until they showed this thing very quickly and briefly. And I was like, whoa, it's a refrigerator there. So, um, I, I'm trying to look it up online to see where it is. But the one he showed us, they said, oh no, the antenna is going to be out in the, um, main way. But this big box will be up against someone's house. And I said, whose house?
Is there anything that we can do about these things?
So the box can be remotely located? Is that what you're saying?
Um, he said it had to be within so much distance, but it doesn't have to be like right on top of it. But I'm trying to look, I'm trying to look that up.
While you're looking it up, maybe we can talk about one other item. Page seven. Site triangle. Item two. Are we talking about our roadway site triangles? What are we talking about there?
There are, I think of what I've, I've got that on maybe page six for me, right at the bottom, just in case.
Oh, mine is on, on page seven.
Okay. Um, let me see. Yeah. I don't, I don't see site.
There's a proposed citing of the small wireless communication facility shall comply with the applicable town site triangle regulations.
D, D, D two. Yeah. Top of page. D two on top, mine's top of page seven.
Huh.
Yeah, same here.
Okay. Not sure why mine is lower. However, um, yeah, that, that would be a roadway site triangle.
The thought was you don't want too many of these in intersections that could block views and travel. And this was Gateway's recommendation to add this type of restriction.
I guess, I, I didn't know about the, uh, the box at the bottom, but I, I was thinking with a 12 inch diameter pole, it hardly has any, um, site impediment.
You'd be surprised. Even telephone poles can, uh, get real creative sometimes with what they block.
Well, but a three by three by three is worse. So.
Yeah.
That's much worse. The pole you are, you know, the bar that you.
That's right.
Or A pillar on your car blocks a lot when you're looking down the road.
Well, Chris, what do you think? Is there anything that we can do about these?
The problem is, and there's actually going to be a very important case coming out of the Commonwealth Court pretty soon. Essentially asking the question, what is, I mean, a municipality's power to zone cell towers in any form? If they can demonstrate that there is a gap in coverage. So, and the Commonwealth Court was kind of flustered with the cell providers' argument, which basically said the FCC has our back. And if there's a gap in coverage, odds are we're allowed to put it somewhere. So we'll see how that goes. What this is designed to do is to recognize that these are going to become more and more popular and put them in the least obtrusive and less interference locations as possible. So we'll try to regulate them. My understanding as far as the three by three by three box is that in the plans that I have seen, they are mounted on the pole, either at the bottom or halfway up. Certainly there are probably other possibilities, but Crown Castle is typically the builder of these. And theirs are usually on the structure itself. And in that case.
Okay.
I think that's where the site triangle regulation comes in. And that's.
Yeah. But if it was too low, it would, it would certainly block your site.
Depending where it is. Yeah.
Oh, that is one that's incorporated, which is what you're talking about. It's a light pole and see the thickness at the top, that's the antenna. And then at the bottom, that's a small one. So that's one incorporated to a pole. So that doesn't look bad.
That's not what the one looks like, Kim, down by St. Peter's Church.
But, but do notice when you're looking at that, that those women that are next to it, it's almost up to their shoulder. So, so it's hard to get perspective, but those two women walking next to it, it is up to their shoulder. Sorry. I'm just giving it to you as I get it.
So Chris, I asked a question. Is the 28 feet, is that an FCC number also, or where, what was the impetus of that?
It comes from the FCC definition of what counts as a small cell.
Okay. So basically it doesn't matter what we want it to be. That's what FCC has already said. So that's another one of those, even if we might not like it, we really don't have much we can do about it.
Can that, can part of that box be, uh, down in the ground? In other words, if it's three feet high, could, could it be buried a foot? And so it's only two feet, two feet high. That would certainly give you a better site trial.
Mm hmm. I am not sure that we're allowed to make them bury their equipment.
Yeah. My guess is that would be a cert, they couldn't service it and it would be in a wet environment and that would be a problem for them.
Plus utilities are in those places. That'd be bad.
I think since we're forcing them to put it in the right away where they can, that would be a potential issue with interfering with that.
All right. Well, it sounds like that's a no brainer. We can't do much more. So I think we're done with that one unless anybody else had any other issues.
I guess live.
All right.
So just to make sure, I, I know what we've got here is we're, we're going to go back and check with the engineers to make sure that we're comfortable with the 12 inch diameter poles in case we're encouraging co-location. And also as this moves along, uh, the town administration and planning will be looking at design standards for, um, individual districts for the stealth structures and making sure they're compatible with the character of the district. Did I pick up everything for follow-up?
I do have one little suggestion. Um, Castle, what's their name? Castle?
Crown Castle.
Crown Castle.
Castle. They were the ones who did the presentation, um, up at, um, the conference. They have all the pictures. They ought to be able to answer all the questions. Would it make sense for them to either send us, um, a PowerPoint that we could read ourselves or have them do a short presentation to answer some of our questions about some of these things? So that we could have that information? I, I really like having pictures. I really like having visual aids. That's where I made those copies. Cause that's what we want to know is how things are going to look, right? Their job to make it work.
Where, where did, geez, sorry if you guys heard that. My desk moved. Um, where did you see that presentation, Kim? Was that at ALON?
Yes, it was ALON.
Okay. Um, I'll see if I can get my hands on that, but if not, I, I might be able to, you know, through one person or another, get in touch with them.
Well, they're located in South Point, Crown Castle.
Oh, so they're close.
Yeah, they've got a big office down there.
I, I would suggest maybe, you know, depending on what, um, you all might discuss with Bob, um, that that might be a good at the council level forum, since we're kind of doing the preliminary review here. And, you know, ultimately council is probably going to want to hear the same information if we were to initiate a presentation. So I'll, I'll let him know that that's something that you're interested in.
I would agree better at council level because they're making the final vote.
Oh, I hope we didn't lose Kim's microphone again.
We did.
Oh no.
Oh, really?
I'm so sorry.
Hey RJ, one thing to add to your list while you're trying to get Kim back.
Yes.
And I don't know, but you guys, I think administratively need to read through that right away use cost thing. And just make sure you're comfortable with taking the, you know, the safe harbor number or if there's a different number that should be attached to that. I mean, I think Chris is right. We got, we have a, we have a, a low number that we can always rest on. But, you know, if we find, we should spend a few minutes just doing a little due diligence to make sure, you know, if our costs are different than that, there's no sense losing, you know, paying a loss on this.
I'll, um, I'll, I'll circle back with Tricia and see if she has any concerns since she's kind of the, the budget wizard. And y'all just run it by her and Bob.
However, you guys want to do it. I just would, I'd, I'd spend a minute just making sure you're comfortable that that's, that's set up.
Sure.
That's for us. So.
Okay. I'm, I'm just taking all my notes here before we move on. And, um, hopefully Kim's audio fixes, because I don't know what's happening every time.
He has computer problems apparently.
I don't know. Maybe it's the internet connection.
Who knows? Are we, uh, ready to move on to the second item?
I believe so.
The review of the draft zoning ordinance amendment on oil and gas development.
Okay. And oh, you know what? I, I believe that at this point, Chris is tagging out with Katie, who I'm about to let into the meeting. Chris, thank you so much. You were extremely helpful.
Pleasure.
Thank you, Chris.
All of you. Thanks, Chris.
Usually like hearing what you have to say and can't do it right now.
RJ, have you let all outsiders in?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Um, I am, I'm, Katie, you're probably muted right now. Let me, as soon as your microphone connects, I will turn you on. Okay. There you are.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, thank you very much, everybody. All right, see you, Chris.
Okay. Bye, Chris.
Kim, if you have something you want to input, why, until you get your mic working, feel free to send it to me in a text and I will convey it to the group. Okay. So, uh, I believe Ted just read the oil and gas on the agenda. Think we're good to go. Give it back to you, Ted. Sorry.
No, we, we, this is a much longer ordinance and I assume that it's, it's geared to, uh, really regulate where we can put the, the fracking, uh, activities in the town. Uh, I, I've read this document and I've read some of the items that, uh, that Kim sent in. So I'm not quite sure how to proceed here, but if there are people who have questions, uh, on this, let's, let's go ahead and do it. Anybody have any questions as we go through this?
Well, so I, I can give just a little bit of background and then maybe we can sort of do the same thing we did with Chris. Okay. I, I see Kim's joining with her phone for audio FYI. Let me just unmute her over here. Okay.
Wow. Okay. So turn you off when you want.
Oh, now.
Sounds like you're in a cavern or something.
Yeah. So Kim, when, when you, you should turn your computer sound off while you're doing this.
How is this now?
Yes.
Much better, much better.
Um, okay. So. So to, just a little bit of brief background, this is again, um, an effort that began since I came on board. But we have spent a little bit of time together between, uh, the town attorney's office, the manager and I, looking at a couple of different things regarding zoning. Uh, you all got a large spreadsheet that was a whole lot of fun. We got to dive into just about every oil and gas ordinance that we could find in Allegheny County, um, around us and, uh, in some of our peer communities. Just so you could kind of get an idea on some of the issues, particularly this conversation had gone on, I believe in Franklin Park recently. And so there were several factors that they had been comparing. That was the framework that the spreadsheet was based off of. Since those are some things that have been popping up a lot in sort of the more, I guess I'll call modern, um, oil and gas ordinances that have been done around here. So beyond that, that's where some of the, of those documents came from. But Katie, if you have anything else to tee us off, and then maybe we could go into the questions from there.
Sure. So just, I would preface by starting, um, we've done a couple of oil and gas ordinances for some of our other municipal clients and, um, have been able to get those passed and on the books. But to start with, McCamus already had a pretty solid oil and gas ordinance. It was leaps and bounds in, ahead of some other communities, just in terms of the number of protections that are there. But we certainly found that there were, uh, some areas to improve and to give a lot more, uh, environmental considerations to the ordinance. So, uh, again, we want to be able to service, um, some of the more environmentally concerned citizens of the town while still not having, um, the ordinance subject to challenge for being exclusionary zoning or making it such that, uh, fracking activity could not occur or be challenged for being too exclusionary. So I know you guys have already been, uh, in this meeting for a bit of time now. So, uh, I'm available to answer any questions. I would hope for maybe for a goal to end this discussion would be to see where the planning commission is leaning in terms of where the oil and gas or fracking use should be permitted as a conditional use within the town. Um, our current draft has it, uh, in the I district. But, uh, we are open to taking your feedback. And from there we can work on, um, fine tuning the draft that we already have and, um, going from there. So yeah, RJ, if you want to open it up to questions or, um, talk about maybe where we would want this used to be, uh, permitted as a conditional use within the town.
Katie, how would you like to do this, Ted?
I'll let you, uh, decide how to handle this. I, uh, not quite sure what we're doing here.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think you and I were probably the only ones, or Jim too, were the only ones on the board or the commission when this was originally written, whenever that was. I don't know Katie, how old is this? Five years maybe now?
At least. Yeah. I think it might even be, uh, be a bit older.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm just going to throw a little historical perspective out there for, for some of the other people. And I think the reason it ended up institutional really Katie, was because when you look at all the setback, other criteria in there, there's really no other place in the town that you could physically do this. And I think that was the driver when we started putting this together, that you start looking at all the restrictions and setbacks and all the things that you needed. If you tried to put it in a C six or whatever, or whatever, they just, it was, it, you basically created an, an, an un, unworkable or, you know.
Right. We, we do not want to be exclusionary or be, be accused of being exclusionary.
Right.
That could subject the town to legal challenge.
Yeah. So you, let's say we want to say, well, we're going to put it in C six because C six, whatever. But when you look at what C six is and where it's at in the town, it really won't work for this use. So I believe from historical and Jim, Ed, please tell me if you think I'm wrong. But basically when you look through all the requirements, it, it pretty much precludes 95% of the towns zoned areas right now.
Well, you're absolutely right. Uh, and what, what is even more important now, since the, since we did that, the, uh, the institutional properties have filled up and very little of that is now available. So it becomes very, very difficult to find any spot in the town that we can say it'll fit, physically in this zoned area.
Though as much as you might not like institutional, I think you kind of, you boxed, you kind of boxed yourself into that's about the only place you can physically say that this could work. So RJ, I don't know if you.
What about, what about an oil and gas, uh, recovery district overlay?
Well, that's, that's, well, I, you're, you're way outside my pay grade.
I'm certain. So just eyeball in the, uh, zoning map that I now have hanging in my house.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah. We found a wall that could fit the big one. Um, I do see the point about some of the smaller commercial districts in that we might struggle to have a parcel that would even have, um, that much land on it. Katie, I think you might be familiar with Franklin Park's, um, overlay approach perhaps?
Somewhat. Yeah. We had reviewed that, uh, a couple of weeks ago, um, particularly after you had put that spreadsheet together. So, um, McCamus does have an, a, an additional overlay district. So, um, McCamus does have an, a, an additional overlay district for something else, does it not?
Yeah, yeah, I believe that there, there are a couple, one is like a transportation district and um.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure, does everyone understand the concept of an overlay? That it.
I think so.
Right, yeah, so it would be crossing uh among borders of different districts and providing specific regulations for this use that would apply to. Um, all of the places in the overlay.
But shouldn't the overlay be more restrictive than the underlying zoning district to begin with?
Well, it, it would depend on, I mean, I, I think the assumption would be that whatever. If, if we were to take this type of approach like Franklin Park took, it, it, it was because they wanted some parts of, let's say, just, we're gonna use institutional as an example, because that's, you know, the standing. Regulation now, you know, we wouldn't want it to be in all of the institutional district potentially, so it would be more limiting, limiting it to sort of a geolocation. Rather than basing it on a zone, which. Sometimes when you have a lot of zoning districts that function in very different ways, that can be something that's a little more unifying. You know, it would have to be something that, that's, that would be discussed where it would bend up, in our case, certainly.
Because I think that would.
Doesn't Franklin Park, doesn't Franklin Park have a lot more open space than McCamus?
Tons, tons.
You know, unused, just big parcels.
I would say.
And, you know, potentially for a, a drilling company to come in, they would want acres upon acres to set up one of those.
That's what I saw, yeah.
I think we have a, we, the, the amendment has a minimum of ten cooked in now.
It does.
Ten acres, it's not acres and acres, it's ten acres, that's what we have in this ordinance.
I just don't think it's a good idea to zone based on area, I mean, I know why it's done. But uh, to me, the underlying purpose of the existing district is what. The expectations have been built on by people that live around it, have businesses around it, et cetera. So I understand why this got the way it is, but if you look at the purpose of the institutional district. It has absolutely nothing to do with, with this, churches, cemeteries, schools, parks, it has absolutely nothing to do with oil and gas, so. It's the largest area, but it's not necessarily akin to the purpose. I, I don't think that. Doing an overlay, you, you don't change the underlying district, I, I think you have to, if you want to do it. Rezone to have a separate district for oil and gas, I just don't see how this is for parks, schools, cemeteries, hospitals and. Gas development, I just don't think you can add that on without fundamentally changing the underlying. District and. I, I don't know, I mean, I know that there's the exclusionary issue. I mean, I've written a bunch of the ordinances in that spreadsheet. But when you have a built out community, I don't think you necessarily have to provide for every single use possible. Like Wilkinsburg doesn't have to provide for an airport, so when there's not just a lot of open fields and open areas, I don't know that the concern is necessarily the same. That we have to change an underlying zoning for North Park or Passman Hospital or. Allegheny County Memorial Park, just to accommodate oil and gas, now I know it's on the books as it is now. Uh, but to me, it's, it's just kind of an, an issue without taking a look at the underlying district, you're putting it in and the purpose of that. To me, that's the foundation that needs to happen, to have any further discussion about what is necessary beyond that.
And I think Brendan, back to the history a little bit, since North Park is a very large portion of McCamus in some aspects. That seemed to be most viable potentially. Space where you could set something like this up without impacting, you know, the town too drastically. Uh, you know, the school district has a couple of large plots of property, of course, as you know, you hit on some of the other ones, so. And that's kind of how institutional, I think, perked to the top back then, because it seemed at least to have, at least gave any driller who wanted to drill. A viable option to find some land that he could do it on, whereas when you looked at all the other ones, there was just basically no way. You could find, you know, ten acres of C six anywhere in the town, so it was, like I said, I hate to say by default, but that. You looked at what happened, it kind of puts you there that with the institutional zoning that gave you that, we didn't talk at all about an overlay back then, it was strictly. You know, where in the town could you find enough room for one of these operations to set up? And institutional became really the, the viable, the most viable logistically feasible option to zone it in. So, that's how we got there, I think, Ted and Jim, if I'm missing something, let me know.
No, I think that's how it came about, this is Ted again. I'm not sure, I, I do agree with Brendan though, I don't think that there's uh any real compatibility between uh fracking and uh North Park or. Or the hospitals or anything like that, it's just, it was just based basically on, on area and nothing else. And I'm looking at, I'm looking at the zoning map right now, I can't hardly find any areas that would be decent for this. I'm wondering if uh. We're making a big, you know, a, a big case out of nothing, in a, in a sense. Nobody's gonna want these small sites that are left over here for fracking.
Well, Katie, maybe.
I see some R two, I see some R two sites for fracking, but that's, they, they're valleys and hillsides and so forth.
Uh, as a reminder, it's uh also under the current version of the ordinance uh permitted in the C two. As a uh conditional use, the neighborhood shopping district, so we did propose uh for it to be removed from there.
Would strongly recommend that personally.
Yes, absolutely, I agree.
My concern with it being in um institution is that there's so much of it. And we don't have control of hardly any of it, so that's what, um, that's what my concern is. Is that if we have a smaller area that we have less possibility of, say, a church. Saying, we're not gonna be a church here anymore, we are not a church now, so we are selling our property oil and gas, or. We need some money, so we're gonna keep it a thousand feet from us, which I think also needs to be changed, a thousand feet from us. And then we're gonna allow them to frac here because we need money. And, and they say it's safe, a thousand feet, so let's do that, and, and that's my concern, because on any of these properties, church, school, whatever. They could declare a thousand feet safe and then allow it, allow a well there. So that, that's what, that's what my concern is, that's why I thought, well, if we got an overlay where we say, look, there's a couple of these properties where it could go. That, that would help reduce our risk. My thought.
Yeah, that's certainly.
Do we have any other properties besides institutional that, that could, that could go in? I mean, dimensionally, do we have any other properties uh that it could go into?
Oh, we have those resident, those residential properties.
Yeah, and, and there's always theoretically.
Eichner's Farm, the, the property on Grubbs Road that they just sold that they're subdividing, the uh. Hef, I can't remember the rest of the name, um, that they're consolidating, that property's large enough.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's always a theoretical lot consolidation risk, even if you don't. Have a property of that size at this moment.
Okay. So I, Kim, you had a, you had a proposal for putting in a different district, didn't you?
Right, that was um in our, um, what was the, the district we just made, C?
Are you thinking it was C six?
It was, I think it was six, um, trying to find all my notes are.
The district where the medical marijuana is allowed, right?
Right, right. Yeah, well, that could be our sin district, we can, our, our sin things can go there.
Right.
There you go.
Yeah, um.
Is, are there, are there any parcels large enough to uh do a fracking site on uh C six?
I believe that there's.
They would have to buy them, they would have to buy them and then use them.
Yeah, so. I think that the one in the center sort of of this district, it's, it's a pretty small one, it's um by, if I'm learning my roads, right, Babcock and McKnight, perhaps? Sort of due north of, of Vincentian. Um, I think the one parcel in the center, I don't know if it would dimensionally be compatible. I believe right now what's across from it is a kid's dental office, so that could get interesting. With the, yeah, I, I think it's tough because that's labeled an industrial district. But the way that the ordinance is worded is sort of focused on light industrial that could all, but that, we're kind of running into the same issue where the purpose outlined of the district. Is not necessarily compatible with this type of use, um, because the, the industrial uses are intended to be entirely contained in a building. And it states something about noise shouldn't be heard outside, Katie, yeah, Katie, do you think you could speak to this a little bit?
It was, yeah, um, earlier, uh, RJ and I had exchanged emails on this, the purpose for the C six. Uh, mentions that the whole use should be able to be encapsulated inside and with minimal um sound or like other effects. Which uh, a fracking use, you know, would certainly not uh fit those uh criteria, sort of like what Brendan said for the um. For the I district, so.
Yeah.
Uh, it's a challenge and that's why we had been kind of talking about the overlay as an option. Because then we could. Make it fit to where the town thinks it could potentially still, still fit and viably be uh entertained as a place. For the use, but also uh not necessarily confined to the borders of the zoning districts as they exist.
Yeah, I, I would hesitate to put anything that's more heavy industry right by our main commercial drag, just in general. From a planning perspective, I think the, we do have a somewhat of a challenge in that we have quite a few zoning districts that are just pure districts. So I would definitely hesitate to create a total, you know, a complete district that only has a couple targeted uses, because we've got quite a few of those right now and, and. I, I think that sometimes we do run into a challenge with when things are redeveloped. And maybe the use changes, that has to trigger a rezoning instead of just a, a, you know, a general redevelopment. However, if we are considering the overlay, that would sort of eliminate. As much of that risk um for future use of properties, I, again, it's not really something that I've, I've thought too hard about, but the idea was posed to us because it happened in Franklin Park and I, I definitely think it's an interesting one.
Has, has anyone, I guess, gone to Gateway or anyone else involved? If, to the extent that Gateway might have a conflict for doing work with the oil and gas industry and just said, based on the existing permit requirements from the state DEP. Can we throw those onto a map, superimposed on our zoning map to figure out where's the no-go to begin with? So as to not worry about those kinds of things.
Well, we haven't asked yet, but that sounds like a challenge for them. I don't mean it's too hard, I just mean it, it could produce something really interesting, so.
It could be a starting point for sure, um, I know the Oil and Gas Act's setback requirements are much lower than I think what the town was hoping to achieve. As far as like distance from, from borders. But it could certainly be a starting point for that.
We, we could do a comparison.
Et cetera.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe sort of the state de minimis versus what we have on the table. And if there are any, you know, I mean, I'm sure there would be major differences, but what would those two overlays look like basically? Overlay in the general sense, not specifically using that term as an overlay district right there.
Because my viewpoint would be, if, if you're considering the use, then why not treat it like any other use, as if you were going through. You know, a comprehensive plan, planning process, figure out where, under existing state regulations with setback requirements to creeks, streams, rivers, et cetera. Where that doesn't allow you to do this to begin with and then figure out, okay, here's where it could be. Let's take a look at what we have in terms of, you know, road access, utilities, water service, density of population like anything else. And then see if a, a, a result can be determined that way and say, okay, well, here's possibilities, what do we want to do? Versus just trying to continue to shoehorn it into what it is now, though I, I tend to agree that this, at least to me, seems. A lot about nothing, based on the built out character and, and the types of uses being that probably North Park is the only place. It likely could go and that, to me, is more of a, a county issue than a, just a McCamus soul issue.
Yeah, this, you'd be surprised sometimes, growing up in Washington County.
We have no, we have no, we have no authority in that park, we have no authority in that park.
But I'm, I'm taking notes on this overlay map, you know, potential map thing, that, that sounds like an interesting thought for sure.
Uh, this is Ted Minard again, Katie, have you looked at all of our map and uh taken a look at what you think uh would be a good solution to this?
Um, I have. I think that uh mainly, probably the only two options that, or three options I'd say that would work would be to do either the overlay that we've discussed. The uh keeping it in the I district that it is now, taking into consideration. That that was what was decided before could be the best part for the C six, because that could be a place. To use Kim's word to, to throw some of the things that are maybe considered less desirable for the town, I mean, I feel, a lot of our clients have those kind of districts. They're like, ah, just, just uh put it, put it down there.
I don't hate the concept, but I don't like where it is for that, I'll just put that out there.
Find, where's the better place, Ben, where's the better place? That's the problem, that's the problem.
But, but it's just, it's tough.
I think if you're gonna do the exercise, it has to have a utility, just saying, we allow this in a certain district, just to say that it's on our books in the district, even if it's. Not usable is, is a, a de facto exclusion, so it doesn't get you the desired result there, I think if you're gonna do it. It, it has to be something thought out versus, and, and I'm not saying that the C sixes is incorrect, but I, I think that there has to be. Yeah, the thought out basis of where do you want it and is the C six on the existing map, given its prime location associated with how the township values. Uh, or the town values this particular activity.
The C six, do we have any lots even big enough on C six or even contiguous that would work in this area? For the dimensions of these uh.
We have to take a measure of it, but right now, I, I only, assuming Google Maps is updated, I only see one lot that is not developed yet. And.
Where is that?
But that, but that's irrelevant though, because they can buy up those lots and redevelop them if they want them. It doesn't have to be a pair, a, a bare naked piece of property where you can fit ten acres, because they could have taken out the Friday. They could have taken out the Chinese place and they could have taken out the daycare and that would have given them a big start where all those properties were, were available. All of those properties were available, so they could have bought those, or they could go in and buy the other big building there and develop it. It doesn't have to be sitting there waiting for them, they just have to have the ability to go in if they want to pay enough money for it and, right, am I correct?
They could ask to rezone other parcels to a C six or something else as well.
There, there's, I think we're more looking at what is, there's a chunk of them that's all just kind of in that one spot. Sort of right north of Vincentian, again, I think, I hope I'm getting my, learning my roads right here. It's also directly south, I think, of the McCamus crossing area, again, if I'm looking at the map right.
And that's the other thing I thought of too, with Vincentian closing their school. You know, that's probably.
Yeah, they are.
It, right, so how is that zoned, so they could close that school and they're the ones who sold. So they could close that school, and they're the ones who sold McCandless Crossing to Continental, so they could very easily sell that property and to an oil and gas pla, or oil and gas place. So we do lose control of that if we keep this in all I. You know, I don't know what the answer is, but I think just all institutional being open to it is very dangerous.
I think what I'm hearing sort of from the group discussion is that there is a lot of concern about, you know, whether it's from one person worried about a particular commercial district, does it exist, or, you know, a lot of us are concerned about the full land of institutional. It's, it's probably at least conceptually worth looking into a, in, in overlay district concept and a little bit more of the implications of that legally. And B, you know, maybe going back to our engineers and sort of drawing up that conceptual dimension map that Brendan was talking about, just to get an idea of if, if that approach was what we wanted to pursue, what could that potentially look like? But, you know, I, I don't want to necessarily head off the rest of the discussion, because I know there were a lot of different comments and things like that. But when we're looking at the zoning district thing, it looks like maybe we need a little bit more information, sort of for the group to feel comfortable regardless of the approach that we take. Would that be a correct assessment?
Would, a council would, they could put a hold on developing this, developing fracking for a limited period of time while we're studying this, is that correct?
Question for the lawyer.
We could, we could do like a pending ordinance type of thing, I think that would be a little premature at this point. Usually at that point it's when ordinances are, is at like the council level as opposed to the planning level.
I think our risk of anybody coming in and drilling is, if it's not zero, it's close to zero.
Yeah.
Under the present economic situations. So I don't, I don't think everybody's going to be jumping in and, and doing any drilling. You know, companies are going out of business, gas is at two, less than $2, crude oil's at 20. I mean, it's, nobody, nobody is drilling and will not be for probably foreseeable future.
But if real estate continues to drop, this is when you buy and hold. That's my concern.
It's, that-
Real estate isn't dropping, though, I don't think.
It will be.
But council, council would have to, council would have to approve, uh, hiring Gateway or whoever it would be to, to take a look at an overlay district. Is that reasonable? Is that something the council would do?
That, that could just be part of an administrative review unless Kim has any concerns about us taking that, that tack.
That's why we hired you.
Say that again?
That's, that's why we hired her.
That, yeah, so with, with that asset stamp of approval, that's something that we could just work into our, our regular engineering department.
Okay, all right, all right.
Right, and I hopefully have them create versions with just the, the state minimum and maybe a setback that the town would actually be more feasibly interested in, 1,000 feet or more.
Can we talk about that now? The setback?
You can, certainly. You recommended 2,000 feet, didn't you?
I did.
That's, that's certainly something that we could, uh, we could change. To my knowledge, I think there's been any legal challenges to setbacks. And since it's, you know, a simple matter of like health, safety and welfare, I think we could certainly make a case for why our setbacks could hold up in a legal challenge.
But again, if you're going to change a setback, then you better make sure that you're giving them the areas that you can meet that setback.
Exactly.
Right, right.
And that-
That would-
C6 isn't working.
That would, yeah, a 2,000 foot setback would, would eliminate everything but North Park, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, that's huge.
It's a half a mile, close to a half mile.
Well, I mean, I think you gotta be, I think for, I, I don't, I don't think we should really discuss this order anymore personally, Ted, because it's all contingent based on if we're changing where it's going to happen at. I mean, this, this was all written based on a, on a, you know, an area that was, would work, was institutional, and the setbacks were set based on what we would think would work inside that. I mean, if we're going to throw that all down the tubes, then really you, this whole ordinance might have to start all over, if you're going to, you know, go in a whole different direction. That's my two cents, I don't know what everybody else thinks, but I mean, Dan spent a lot of time putting a lot of great comments together, but I'm not sure if they would apply if we go into this overlay or we start other, you know, open up other areas. You know, you might look at this whole thing in a different way if you, you know, if it's a 2,000 foot setback compared to a 1,000 foot setback per se.
Every setback it has to have a basis, that it just can't be a-
Yeah, can't be arbitrary.
Yeah, the 2,000 feet is recommended in a lot of the health literature, that's where I came up with it. But RJ, can you look at that, if you're looking at overlays, seeing what kind of setbacks they have? Oh, we could do it here, but this would be 1,000 feet, or this would be 1,500 feet, or this would be, you know, to see what of those, if they worked?
Yeah, I, I would suggest, just because I'm, I'm thinking about how this would probably work on GIS, um, this might be a little more time intensive than just clicking a couple buttons to filter, which sometimes you can do with, you know, different types of districts and uses, uh, which is just fine, I'm, you know, I'm sure that we can handle it. But we should probably pick maybe two discrete levels in addition to the state minimum, so that way we're not, you know, creating work just to kind of, you know, check out a, a range of options that might not be realistic. So maybe 1,000 and 2,000, and then the state minimum might be a good place to start.
What is the state minimum?
That's a great question, let me see. I think it might be 500, but double check me on that, please.
I think the state has setback requirements from wetlands, streams, rivers, et cetera. I mean, that at least was where I was coming from.
Okay.
Versus setbacks from structures, property lines, et cetera. I was just looking for wetlands, streams, th, those kinds of things versus protected structures, property lines.
Gotcha.
I, let me, I had emailed myself the statutory section earlier.
I, I think that with 500, I may have been thinking of protected structures.
And I think our setbacks are based on property lines, if I remember, right?
Yeah.
No, structures, structures.
Okay.
Our, our general zoning, you know, sort of overarching district to district, the setbacks can be based on property lines, but then you can additionally go in with, say, the special design standards, which is essentially what we're doing here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, there's a section 3215 of the Oil and Gas Act, that it's talking more about drilling within a certain number of feet from a building or water well, you can't do it without consent of the owner. And that's as, as small as 200 feet for a shallow well or a conventional well, and 500 feet for a unconventional slash Marcellus well. So that's, um, you know, quite smaller than-
The start.
Yeah, but certainly less than what we've got or what we're thinking about getting.
Certainly.
What, what is the, I assume that municipalities can increase those limits? And in your experience, Katie, what do most municipalities do in, in, as far as setbacks are concerned?
It sort of depends on, I would say, the, the flavor of the constituencies and the residents and what they would be interested in in terms of wanting to promote oil and gas for the financial benefit that it could have for property owners versus the environmental concerns that other residents have had. So we have some clients that have like the state minimum as their setbacks, and we have some that are more in the 1,000 or more range, so it really can depend.
But the, the ones that encourage fracking, I assume, are, are rural districts? Am I correct on that?
Definitely, definitely more and that have larger tracks, uh, that would be more conducive to like a large scale Marcellus type operation.
Okay. Well, uh, what are we going to do at this point? Are you there, still there, RJ?
I'm making-
I am still there.
I'm going to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I said I'm making, do we need a motion, but I would motion that we table this.
Yeah, you know what, so, uh, for, that's a good point about the motion. If we are comfortable after just backtracking a little bit, the, the small wireless facility discussion, what's the particular comments, then sort of next action items that we came up with, uh, you all could motion and vote to send that one on to the council stage of review, if you're satisfied with sort of what, what your input was on that. For this one, um, since this is just sort of a preliminary review, unless, Katie, feel free to chime in, unless you particularly think we need to table this, we can sort of just pull back and come up with more follow-up information, because this was just a discussion. Yes?
That's fine, yeah, I, I think that it'd be really helpful, RJ, if you could engage the engineers to maybe do a bit of mapping for the commission. One other thing I wanted to say is, Dan, I really appreciated your thorough review and comments, like somebody else brought up, um, there's definitely some organizational aspects to an ordinance of this time that could use some cleaning up, and we will certainly be able to make those changes once we get a more clear picture of the where and the setbacks. So, yeah, just some, a lot of these comments were related to getting things more organized in, in terms of a section for specific application criteria for the conditional use applicant, and then getting into some more of the operational standards, assuming that they had been approved for the conditional use. So, thank you for that.
Two, two general comments, Katie, in addition to all the 30 or so comments that I did give you, which were, some would say nitpicky because they were just definitional and, and clarifications, all of which you have and you can incorporate them as you see fit. But there were two general comments, one is this is labeled as an oil and gas ordinance, yet it's hardly ever mentions oil, uh, or any oil operations. So that may be more likely that we would have gas drilling and gas operations, and I would agree that it's more likely, but, um, everything in here, almost everything in here is referenced as if it's a gas ordinance, when in fact we call it an oil and gas. Again, you can look at that. And then lastly, there's a whole other aspect of this, which I'm not sure where we've addressed and whether we even need to, and that is, if anybody's going to drill under this ordinance, it's going to be a deep Marcellus or Utica well, high pressure shale. Those wells are tremendously high pressure, 5,000 pounds higher, and, and tremendous volumes. That takes an entire new pipeline system and/or midstream facilities to move that gas. No existing pipelines could even begin to move a gas well drilled into the new shales. That is a whole new area, pipelines and rightaways and compressor stations and separate processing plants. We, we touch on it, but just barely in this ordinance. And I just think we ought to be prepared that if somebody is eventually going to come in here and do something under this ordinance, it only starts some of our work in trying to figure out what to do with the product and how to get it out of McCandless, rights of ways are, are bugaboo, it just goes on and on and on. And there was one definitional section in here called transmission line or something like that, which I see has been taken out, maybe purposely, maybe it was just omitted, I'm not sure which, but that was the only reference to moving these products. So just be aware that that is a whole ancillary area that has to be dealt with if and when this ordinance ever is acted upon.
Probably more difficult than regulating, we're zoning for drilling. Pipelines are just incredibly difficult to deal with, I agree.
Um, and I do want to just throw out there that this, the reason that this is titled the Oil and Gas Development Section is because we're amending an existing portion of the zoning code that has that title. So it's 1341.19, for reference.
Yeah, there's a whole section on, up on regular oil, we just didn't have the Marcellus shale covered well.
Okay.
I, I don't think we had it covered well at all.
Now, when you're looking at this oil and gas, uh, gas is compressible, oil is not, uh, so oil has to be pumped, it can't be delivered high pressure like gas. So when we talk about compressor stations and so on, that would be strictly gas, not oil.
Agreed.
Right.
RJ, back to your comment about approving the first one.
Oh, the motion, yes.
Yeah, my, my only concern with that is that one section where we talked about the trees and that whole gig. Well, how this thing should look. I'd really like to read that before we approve it, because that's really the meat and potatoes of this thing. And that whole section, as we talked about, is all kinds of different aspects that probably need to be beat or for we say-
Now, this particular one, Katie, this was done under the pending ordinance doctrine, right? The small, we're back on the small wireless facilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did that.
Are there any timelines that we need to be concerned about it for council's purposes, since that had been advertised as pending ordinance?
Um, I don't believe so, I'd have to double check with Chris.
Okay.
If I'm not familiar.
So, I mean, generally-
There was, on the ord, on the ordinance we passed, there was no timeline on that, but I don't know if it's like set somewhere and it's just understood, but-
Yeah, I've, I've only done pending ordinance doctrine a couple times, and they were both, um, and this is, you know, in my, my previous experience before McCandless, um, and, and those are both things that moved along pretty quickly. So off the top of my head, I'm not sure if there's, you know, basically, the, for anyone who's not familiar, the pending ordinance doctrine is essentially you can advertise that you have this pending ordinance at the council level that is sort of assumed ineffective until you say otherwise, but you have to adopt it at some point. So I just want to make sure that any review timelines that we take on aren't bumping up on something that would put council in a bind under that.
Well, again, whatever it is, but I mean, I think that whole section, what is it? You know, paragraph?
Right, the design standards for the artificial-
I mean, that's-
Stealth towers.
It's part of what we do as the planning commission, is look at design, so I'd be leery to approve this as it's written now, because I think there's a lot of not good things here right now. So, or not, not good, but you know, need clarified or, you know, before we say, yeah, that makes sense, so, and that's where I'm at on it, so.
No, I agree with you, Rob. I, well, are, are, Katie, are you looking for the, the, the ordinances that define the timelines on this? Or are you going to look at that further in the future?
Or your shot clock for the small cell. I would need to-
Are we still okay? If, if that, that was, if that was left for another month, would be, would be, would we be okay?
Sorry, I put you on the spot with this one here, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about that pending ordinance doctrine, let me see if I can find an answer here.
Is it the pending ordinance doctrine based on advertising intent to adopt in a, a public hearing associated with, with that at the, the council level, correct?
Right, which is, has already been done at either, it was one of the April meetings, I believe.
I would think if it was in April, we'd be okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to red herring us here into some, worrying about something we shouldn't be, but I, I just, because I'm not entirely familiar with that process, and if there's a timeline, I just thought I'd, you know.
I don't, I don't think there is, I think it's just until the ordinance is passed.
Okay. In that case, we probably are okay.
Well, let's table it then.
Yeah.
Could we have a motion to table the first item? Could we have a motion to table the first item?
I'll make a motion to table item number one, the small wireless antenna ordinance, or whatever that was called.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
All right.
In that case, we should probably table the other one, just for consistency, too.
Yeah, we should do, we should table them both. Rob, would you like to table, to make the motion again?
I'll make a motion to table the oil and gas ordinance modifications.
I'll second that one, also.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, so we, we will, I assume, look at these again next month, hopefully we will have a bit of an overlay district to take a look at on the oil and gas, and, uh, hopefully the, the first ordinance will be cleaned up a little bit, and we can actually adopt that one. Okay, what else do we got? We got minutes from the March 3 meeting to approve. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I will move.
Seconded.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, and then, I guess, the only other thing is adjournment, unless there, is there any other, other items that anybody wants to bring up before we adjourn?
Kim's gotta hand up.
Me, 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 pick me. Um, where are we on the dog thing?
On the what?
Chicken thing.
Ah.
The dog thing and the chicken thing.
Yeah, so...
Oh, God.
That committee meeting was scheduled...
My email's all excited.
Let me think, I think that it was...
Did she say dog?
Yeah, it's, it's the animal, the animal ordinance, and that committee was scheduled for the day that we had to start canceling the public meeting, so it just hasn't picked up since then.
Hey, don't, you can't forget it, people are wanting it. Okay, that's all I know.
Put her on the agenda for the next meeting, then.
Yeah, we, we, we need to get that committee together still for the...
Oh, oh, the committee hasn't met yet, is that what you're saying?
No, no, the, the committee's fin, I think, hopefully, final meeting had been...
Right, I think it was gonna probably be the last meeting of our little animal subcommittee, was to be the day that Corona, uh, really struck.
That was literally the day we had to make the call to cancel the public meeting, so... Yeah, bad timing, I, I, our sea day got disrupted, chicken day.
Okay. Can you have a Zoom meeting with those folks and, and, and prepare something for, uh, the next meeting?
Sure.
Or is that pushing too much?
Um, Katie, do we have pretty much a draft ready to review for them?
Yes, hopefully we could get that so that this body can review it at your next meeting next month, I think we can do that.
Well, that'd be good.
I guess reasonable.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, could I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Any, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, okay, I guess we're adjourned. Thank you.
All right.
RJ, you set up a nice meeting by Zoom.
Thank you.
Next month, I hope to show my lovely countenance on your, uh, your Zoom.
I'll get in on time.